All right, all those are favorites, they're high. Neil Post. I thought we had that. Time for rest, play that, and. Next up is our present agenda.
Tell them we have to set the agenda.
Thank you Adrian. Thank you Diane. Any additions or discussion? Done. All those are favorites now.
I don't have any.
The handles. Now we need to declare our president's period open. And turn it over to you. Questions?
Yeah, does anyone have any questions on George? If we track through budget and what's the main thing that uh gets approved of justice? We did get a small increase in our base for funding, but that was yesterday and we don't have time to do it any further budget.
What? We know, it's the biggest order of my time. Uh, there are.
That's what they will take money like everything on.
Any other questions?
Let's stay open an hour.
We do not.
Oh, you do not?
Do not.
Because we think we don't, they say that you don't think of that.
It is never. So now we move on to.
Is there anything else? Is there?
Does anybody have a comment? Did anybody sign up for any comments for next morning?
Oh.
She's very. Yes. Here's the.
No, then I will be about to have presented for the twenty twenty four. Oops. Be it resolved. It's the whole. Resolution number twenty twenty four oh three adopting the budget. Be it resolved with the Board of Directors from Coos Bay School District hereby adopts the budget for this school year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five in the total amount of seventy nine million, seven hundred fifty one thousand, four hundred and ten dollars and three cents. This budget is now on file at the District Administrative Office, twelve fifty five M Lock Avenue in Coos Bay, Oregon. Be it resolved that the amounts shown below are hereby included for the district hearing beginning July first, twenty twenty four for the following purposes. General fund. Instruction, twenty two million, five hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred and fifty seven dollars and three cents. Support services, seventeen million, nine hundred and two thousand, three hundred and ninety three dollars and fifty four cents. Enterprise and community services, nothing. Facilities acquisition, nothing. Transfers, one million, nine hundred thousand dollars. Debt services, nothing. Contingency, one million, seven. For a total of forty three million, three hundred twenty four thousand, eight hundred and fifty one dollars.
Seven. Oh, yeah, or okay, I can read all. I've never thought so.
Okay. You know, for the dollars, we're imposing the tax.
Okay. Be it resolved and all the southern. Be it resolved that the Board of Directors from Coos Bay School District hereby impose the taxes provided for in the adopted budget at four dollars fifty two, four dollars point five two seven six per one thousand and seven cents for permanent tax rate and in the amount of three million, nine hundred sixty six thousand, five hundred eighty three for debt service on general obligation bonds, and that these taxes are hereby imposed for tax year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five upon the assessed value of all taxable property within the district. Be it resolved that the Board of Directors for Coos Bay School District hereby categorizes the taxes as follows. Permanent tax rate for education, four dollars point five two seven six per thousand. General obligation bond excluded with limitation, three million, nine hundred sixty six thousand, five hundred eighty two dollars.
Add. That was quite the motion.
I can't live for forty because of those.
Show on the floor if you have a second.
Okay.
Thank you David, now you need to repeat all of that.
Yeah.
As per.
Any discussion? Question or comments?
I just want to say um a thank you to those people who consistently come to our budget committee. Yeah, it's not the most glorious time to sit here and go through all these numbers and ask questions. We have some people who have been doing it since the nineteen seventies uh on our budget committees. Uh, we have others that have come and gone, but they read it. You can tell because we asked a lot of insightful questions um and they take it very seriously that they are part of the budget process and our organizations don't work without volunteers who are willing to put in time for nothing other than the gratitude that we can give them and their own kind of affection for having done it. But it is always um heartening to see people at left and right and did a bunch of things for a long time and came back the same people were there. It has been no mistakes, so it is uh. It is with a lot of gratitude that. Thanks them for the time that they put in, make this happen, which is well, things have passed that happen through here. Um, and they drop what they're doing and they come in and they read this packet of materials and they probably understand it, that was a lot of that, because they've been doing it for so long, so they can ask really good questions. So why is this different from what we've lost three years and again, somebody has to be able to answer that. Our new person has done an amazing job, given that she had to only do two or three budgets, which would spend getting from one system to the other. All this stuff happened, and then has the four different projects that were going on from every different organization in the country. It was amazingly tough year last year for a number of people who really stepped up and did it and want to say thank you to all those people.
Well said, thank you Bernie, thank you.
Yeah, the one.
Yeah, volunteers, that's fantastic. All right, any other comments? Want to follow that? Okay, let's go for vote Kevin, Bernie, Adrian, Patty, Diane, David.
All right.
I know you as well. All right, now we're gonna formally close our budget period. Next up is, we're gonna recognize our retirees of the twenty three and four school year. Good evening, everyone, I have a little script that they've been working on. I wanted to take a moment during our meeting today to recognize and celebrate the dedicated service of our retirees from the Coos Bay School District. This year, we have several esteemed colleagues who will be embarking on a new chapter in their lives. Their commitment and contributions to our students, our schools, our our community have been invaluable. We are grateful for the positive impact they have had over the years. Please join me in recognizing and expressing our heartfelt appreciation to the retirees of twenty twenty four. Doug Landrum. The Hallie Norvetts.
Valerie, yeah.
Lee Metzola. Good night. In Congress, yes.
In her job.
Daisy Stiglitz. With sunshine and Lisa DiBalla. Each of these individuals has brought me countless passion and dedication to their roles, helping to shape the futures of countless students. Their legacy will continue to inspire both current and future educators. We wish them all the best in their retirement and thank them for the many years of service to the Coos Bay School District. Thank you all.
And you all are so young to be retirees. On the budget.
Where did you go? Over here, Stacy. That's right, I just said that. Doug, Doug can get that.
Yeah.
Yeah. They've got a lot of them there.
Yeah.
Yeah. So like I could slide off. Very.
I told them that's.
Seriously. Back a little bit into bags. Okay, what's. Sorry. Can we have? We need to move on.
No ma'am.
Now we have a. So yeah, I'm gonna say something. It's been my honor and pleasure to serve this community from the center of nineteen eighty one. Parting with my leave of title for thirteen years. It's like. Lee Edwards. I'll give you guys that. You know, continuing to work in hard for these kids, it's been really, really meaningful. It's been an opportunity. Thank you. Thank you.
I do, I do, this break like, and this is super not my thing, I can't speak to adults. But I I wanted to also um express my appreciation for the opportunity. It's been a great fit for me, uh for my family. My two daughters work for the school district now. Um, I had a great boss in Lisa, uh probably the best teacher that I worked with, Kayla. And she would have been my boss if I was staying in there, but I'm not going to. Um, so it's been a good run for me and I appreciate it, thank you. Second question, question A, if I could just not teach you. So in the hour, that is the end, that is good for pre coming on. First of all, Washington State, choose to be coaches as well, um we have all other coaches that are pleased to be. It doesn't work well if you don't have people in the current system to be your coaches. It is to be a real pain um for people who are trying to keep control of things, but Doug has stepped up many many times for goodness sake.
You have to say your daughter. Kayla. Yeah. He's he's still. It's an accident, somebody said your name on the retire list. He loves.
One other thing about me, that. Me, it's what you want to or don't want to. You're not a true old person and defending her kids, whatever she thought was right, she didn't hold back. And I have appreciated that all those years um and she's worked in a lot of different parts of our district, so. She's a.
I have worked in an art school.
I.
I think I have like nine senior attendants and fifteen younger girls and she likes to help me teach.
Yeah. It's very.
It's gonna, it's been really fun.
And some of those kids are really not very easy to deal. And so you got to deal with them.
I don't like to press anybody else off, get anybody else off with anything. Can I just say? Yeah, absolutely. I know it's more than, but I won't say. Because it's more than just. But um, um, but I wanted to say that she was one of my favorite students and uh I hope for such.
Anybody else?
I'm sorry, I just had my bad and I feel that way, I also have to appreciate it all my time here, it's been my life. Really excited about the new days that are coming and still being trying to connect with the people that I'm sure are going to be missing here. Leaving this place. Kayla got it, and she got it, just got it. Help you around, you're over by Seven Devil and Whiskey Run, hop on by, you can't miss me at the sign that says children's falls center in October. Top food, but anyway, it is um. Things in better condition if anything. Thank you.
Thank you.
All can keep in doubt, speed and water.
All right, so moving along, you know, public comments. Anybody else? If that's a price for that. Hopefully not.
So I'll start off with graduation. Um, we had one hundred and eighty one graduates and there were six speakers and four valedictorians and one suitorian. And uh we had our stacked throne quartet, which I don't know if you went to graduation, but I think that they did amazing.
Yeah.
And they played the national anthem. And uh our spring seasons all ended very successfully with all eight sports making it to state. Um, Mr. Mulkey said that was the first time you could ever remember it happening. And he's been here a while, I think that's pretty cool. Um, with a track doing well, says John, John Parks won the state championship in the pole ball for the third time in a row, with Dana Wilson coming right behind him in second. Bodie Lutz won first in the four hundred and third in the two hundred, which this, the two hundred was really impressive, uh because if you didn't know, all the top three all beat the meet record. Yeah, so all together, they were going really fast and there was a big competition for that. And uh the four by four team, four all state champs, which were comprised, was comprised of Bodie Lutz, Joseph Herbert, Quentin Kloster and Chandler Wyatt. Um, Daphne Scriven uh won third place with distance. And for tennis, Morgan and Gwen and Peter and Connor made it to state as doubles. And um I think it's been like twenty years since girls have gotten that far, so that's really cool for Morgan and Gwen. And um softball made it to the quarterfinals and then they lost, which was sad, but that was their goal to make it to the top eight, so they completed that. And baseball made it to playoffs, but sadly lost. Um, girls golf got fifth in state and boys golf got ninth, uh which Elijah mentioned they didn't do so great, but I still think it was pretty good, they they still did pretty good Elijah. And we had our end of the year band choir concerts, which were great and amazing course. Um, because uh they're both being, uh they're both a lot better than they were because of COVID. And um our end of the year awards night was successful with three hundred and twenty awards given to over two hundred students. Uh, this year they give, they they gave out four hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars worth of scholarship to sixty one students. Um, senior signing assembly, the senior signing assembly recognized over seventy students who were given hats. Um, if whether they were going to college or um whether they're going to military or whatever they were doing, they're given hats and they told us all their future plans. Um. Uh, we have a lot of new classes being planned for next year. We have a college imaginary writing class, marine science, marketing, intro to child development, nutrition and wellness, first aid, sports exercise, and then the three new culinary classes, flavors of the world, doughs and batters, and foods of America. There's also lifetime fitness and fire, uh fire science course. Um, recently there were the journalism awards and the Marshall Times did great in the realm contest. Um, and then we have five girls and three boys going to Boys and Girls State, which is a hundred percent paid for. And this is the first time the Marshall Times gives them a going to Boys and Girls State since before COVID. Um, SNHS inducted around fifteen new members and NHS had around twenty two. We had our memorial assembly and this was attended by fourteen honored guests. And the American Legion Honor Guard raised the colors and our band played in this assembly. Uh, and it was focused on Marshall alumni that died in World War Two. Next year, it focuses will be on the Vietnam War. And uh the Marshall alumni who are buried in the cemetery that died. Or who were just buried around football. And uh we had our all fall sports have started their offseason practices, which includes football, soccer, cross country, volleyball. I don't want to support. The um, the ASC elections concluded, next year's officers are Peter Montilla's president, Steel Carpenter is vice president, um Ava Andrew is secretary, Isabel Reba Blake as treasurer, Matea Zatika as publicist, um Annalee Smith Ward and Emily Clark as event coordinators, and Bodie Lutz and C.C. Cox Cox as uh activities coordinator. And our creative coordinator is Bella Roberts. And the two board reps for next year are myself and Elijah Goodson. Um, next uh school, summer school starts on June twenty fifth. Uh, seventy six students are currently signed up for either credit recovery or enrichment courses. Um, credit recovery is credit recovery and then enrichment courses are basically if you want to just have a weight class or something fun, you take enrichment courses because there are things you wouldn't normally be able to fit into your schedule. And next year, we also have a new bell schedule, office hours on Thursday for forty three minutes from eight ten to eight fifty three before school. And all classes will have a meeting once a month, so not just senior meetings, but sophomores while sophomore meetings, freshman while freshman meetings, for things that just apply to their class. And instead of our normal pack classes, starting with the incoming freshmen, will be sorted by our interests into a career interest pathway. Um, for example, if you really don't care about CT at all, then that probably isn't the right um pack class for you because you don't really speak that language and it might, if you're more interested in like becoming a doctor, you might want to take me with a health teacher. Um, so that's basically what we've had started. Use yourself Elijah.
Yeah, uh I'm Elijah Goodson, I'm going to be co-school board repping with uh Mallory and here and uh.
Yeah. No, we need a first semester and I'll be the second semester based off of what sport we do because it's complex when we're able to be here.
What grade are you in?
What grade do you?
Oh, I'm a freshman coming in. It's nice to have. Yes.
And Valerie, let's say I never realized you were a sophomore and you're something.
Really?
Yeah.
What grade did you think it was?
I thought we were gonna see.
Yeah, I don't know, do carry yourself very. Thank you. Any questions? Props.
Um, so Elijah, just to let you know, we're always interested in hearing any comments you might have on anything on our agenda, especially if we want to give your opinion on those, if you're still around for those, um, but you're not loving them.
And you don't have to say.
You don't have to say, but if you see something on the agenda, the plug's really good.
And you want a copy of it, but it's good for it. It's my.
Yeah, that's.
That's a lot. All right, next up is our CBA business.
Good evening, I have a short presentation, I felt like uh may soon by, uh no should I, because I'm busy, um have just a couple minutes to report, I was going to uh, you know, celebrate retirees, but you stole my glory, you're gone. Kind of kidding, because I don't have a lot, so. Um, I first want to, and I'm so glad that Rachel Lindsay is here. Uh, when last month when I was uh reporting up, I um I shared this slide with all the names except Rachel Lindsay from inside because we had um somehow forgotten.
That was bad information I passed on, sorry.
So uh she deserves to be on, I saw, I just wanted to make sure um that she got the recognition she deserved. So sorry for that. Thanks for speaking up. Um, of course, we have uh two of the retirees from our CBA members, Doug and Alia. Uh, the next slides uh have a couple comments, kind of like a virtual card uh from some of their coworkers. Uh, I'll be sharing it out with them as well as other members and um you guys have it now as well to read it, but uh since they're not here, I'm not gonna read them aloud. And that's all I have. I uh I just want to say, um, you know, as you know, this is the last week of school, I I picked up um our last week with a great filter today for the jet boat with our sixth graders from Oklahoma. And it was just a spectacular day with lots of laughing and all I can hope for uh for this last week. And I hope the same here with my coworkers and colleagues, um that everybody gets to have some fun with their kids. So and uh restful and rejuvenating summer.
And another reason the school feels good is we do involve the coaches, her husband is our baseball, one of our baseball coaches. They made it play after, he was shocked. You said that the other day. That's the kid, the kid's interviewing, they cut aside more. But you know, the coaches are always pushing the next thing.
I'll be honest.
It was fun.
All right, where are you?
I did not have a slideshow long, I'm scared. Uh, I really enjoyed the time in there and I had joined in on me and all field trips I'm invited to by student. Uh, so today I went with a bunch of first graders to the beach to go see like sea urchins and anemones and my group made it a goal to go up the first. And so I did not have a slideshow because of the amount of field trips and things that I've been doing in school for today. Um, but I wanted to recognize our retirees, which I noticed our uh Dee had already dipped out as well and I was just kind of I was a part from OSBA. Um, I know Dee is at Sunset and one of the really great things about her is whenever I walk into the building, she always breaks me by name and she, you know, has a smiling face. And so she's always very friendly, no matter what building she's been in, she's always great at me coming in and sometimes when you're not just in my building, you're you're not always acknowledged, but when you come in the building and that's one great thing about her, she's very accepting of all people in. And uh Stacy is uh Doug Landrum's assistant and so they are retiring together this year. And uh they are just a amazing team, Stacy just really goes above and beyond. And uh they are just a completely new team. Stacy just really goes above and beyond and connects with her kids. Um I know I had her as a staff spotlight this year and that was before I knew she was even planning on retiring this year. Uh but she's just really amazing, not just for our students, but for our staff. When staffer out sick or having a surgery or a big life event happens. Stacy always makes sure to put together like her own cheer package or to come by and make sure you're doing okay, you don't need anything. Um I don't know what she plans on following here in at the basketball games anymore. No, no. So so she was just like one of those faces that my kids also found safe. And I know uh personally, I thought um my my son used her as one of his big spots. So I think they played a lot of the known. Uh so I just wanna take a chance and really, you know, acknowledge our people who've been here for a long time and are moving on into that next chapter in their lives as they pull the sword. And that's all I have for tonight.
All right, now in fact, our curriculum adoption.
We've been working on our curriculum adoption for two years. And uh we've got one teacher from each grade level from each building, plus a few other staff, like E L L, Fed, and my toes uh to help us make the decision. Uh we piloted piloted two different some materials at the K to eight level. And then at the high school level, for the most part, the majority of the math staff participated. Um the seventh, twelfth grade teachers are making these decisions. And if we've settled on what I'm reading to you today is for K to eight, that we've settled on sadist learning, which the product is called Vision. And their assessment package and their online learning. That's what you see at the top and David may have that, right?
Yes. It's page forty.
And then at the Algebra One and Higher level, and the reason that I say Algebra One instead of I think for fourth grade, even though it's there in parentheses, is we have some of our younger students taking Algebra One. And we're um we've settled on the Sandage products, which went from big ideas, titles in Algebra One to Geometry. And then several Sandage titles for the higher level math options. And the only only item that's not um through the Sandage brand is the B F W brand and it's a statistical reasoning book. And that looks pretty exciting. We've been trying to get that in place for a while. So it's statistical reasoning and sports, hoping that the students really are engaged in that. And then um for science, our our math adoption was delayed on year, we took two years to do it. So this would have been the year that we would have worked on science, but it's too hard to do both of those at the same time. Because the staff that are generally highly interested in textbook adoption, there's a bunch of overlap there and it's just too hard to do both at the same time. Uh however, and once you get to the secondary level, you don't have that overlap because they're not multi-subject teachers. And this group at the sixth grade level wanted to adopt the same materials that they have right now. So it was a pretty easy decision for them. And we went back and forth in terms of should we just wait and do all the science next year? But the way that the contracts work, if I would have just got with one year track for the science materials, they they charge a lot more than if you do a like your contract, since they made the decision, it just makes, even the last probably few weeks, we can't do that conclusion. Um so it's worth it just to save the money for instance. They've settled and that's a small group of teachers, three or four teachers that are involved in that, that's an easier decision. Um the one thing there is, it's a two thousand eighteen edition and all of these materials that you see here um that are required to be are on the Oregon state list of materials that we are allowed to adopt from. Except for, for example, some of these higher level science, higher level math books that only doesn't have a suggested list. Um to select from. So my last note there, the remainder of these science materials will be included in the twenty two twenty four one five year, they'll start that next year. So this is my official announcement that start working on science here as soon as we can, which will probably start once everybody gets settled in in October. And I will probably do, gonna be able to finish up in in one year. Um and then my other note there, Amplify Science. Uh what they told us is there, even though their materials are currently up to date. Um because that is a two thousand eighteen edition, they'll be adding materials and allowing us pilot materials over the next few years. And our teacher can want to do that and it's an opt in, they can either stay with that set of materials. Or as these new pilot materials come out, they can opt in and take advantage of newer updated lessons, which they want to, they were excited about that. And that's another reason to stay with Amplify. They've already learned how to use the materials, they're somewhat cutting edge. It also matches the Amplify adoption that we did at the K to six level with the E L A materials. So i- it's just easier, it's less time spent learning how to use this system online or it just consolidates, it's you know, it's more. So it's a good thing. So I'm asking today to officially adopt these materials. And so I will, you do that and the next week I'll start to purchase um requisitions and then also, I've already created on some of that, that I'll finalize it and also professional development for any of these new materials that will take place in almost during our teacher instruction week. And the materials are out there on the table, they've been out there for a while. You can come in and take a look at, and you may have seen that announcement.
Um what's uh what what does it look like in terms of rolling this out? And then we had, we had some, you know, B times, we tried to get teachers figure out how to use materials. What what are we, what are you thinking of? How long would it take? If you can see them use these.
It will, probably about a year, after the first year, we'll have a pretty good handle on it because they're they're next generation materials in in that they have art talking materials, but then they have all the online which is the adaptive learning, individualized adaptive learning and also the assessment package. But that's really close to the to um Amplify Science that they've been using and Amplify E L A. So it's not a completely new idea at this point, so it should be smoother.
And do we, do we have some sense of confidence that this will also improve our our math scores and learning over time? I mean, I think that is an obviously significant problem for us.
Teacher, teaching and instruction is the number one thing that makes a difference in our students moving forward. Uh we learned a lot with Amplify adoption because we paired that with just literacy improvement in general and joining with the O R T I pro- project. So we kind of shifted in in our understanding of the way to assess and teach literacy. Uh I suspect that this is going to somewhat happen with math and people are, it's gonna open their eyes to other other things and and maybe even move more into the science of of math. It's our opportunity plus we'll have a pretty good alignment there going from K to eight and then at the secondary level. Um but to answer your question most expense is it really comes back more to instruction, the material's been kind of guided us in the right direction. And it will be time for them to decide now that we've kind of finished Amplify. Playing, what kind of math training do we need to improve our our math instruction? Because that's where it's really
But not to take that, I know when some of the, the language teaching, I think the approach is so different sometimes, I believe, or I think some of your teaching is.
Well.
But you're saying with the math, that will not necessarily dictate that really sort of inform our instructor.
It will help in terms of the assessment package and the the adaptive learning that we have at high K to eight as well. Um and that will push us to ask the questions like we did of literacy, what do we, what do we need to improve in? How can we get better? It will, it will prompt those questions and lead us down to, okay, what type of professional development do we need? What changes do we need to improve? So it will store that, but it won't do it in itself because the textbooks are your materials and it's instruction that we need to improve more than. So i- it's going to prompt us and lead us down that in itself, maybe the difference.
Because it's more to lead us to the need to focus on making teamwork. That was more of a whole for, but we left it. Okay, also. I guess I lose point two. Results, but I guess I was hoping a little bit more that that it would help clearly inform us differently.
The assessment package will will do a better job of pointing to where the where the students need to improve. And then that begs the question, what do we need if they don't learn it after we instruct? Then what do we do to make a difference? What do we do to improve? And if we don't have good assessments, you you can't really say, well, this is exactly what they don't know yet. And now with a better assessment package, it's gonna point us in that direction and and really beg the question like, okay, what are we gonna do now? And i- and and the teachers will say, well, this is what we're gonna do to improve that or we don't know what to do. And if we say we don't know what to do, then we start looking to what professional development do we need to help us know what to do? So it it's gonna instigate a change, but it isn't the change itself.
Okay, the resources are available, but what happened is that the time this school started, we had a couple of years where it's been pretty ugly. Um or the books didn't get here and not to spend a lot of them.
And that was a COVID issue. But uh the resources other than Amplify during COVID, they will be here on time. We're unstable for ordering, we're not behind this in all that time because that's yeah, and they'll be here on time borrowing some so I think issue. And like today, when I was talking to the folks about professional development, we're unstable.
Any other questions? All right, this is an action item.
I don't know that we accept the math. This is twenty thirty one, eight to eight. Seven. And a whole of the deductives enough, a and a science deduction for the six A science.
Thank you, David. Any other discussion or questions? Let's see, both, David?
Hi.
And I'm Teddy.
Hi.
CJ?
Hi.
I'm
Hi.
And I'm
Hi.
I'm fine as well, I'm in Paris.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. And I wanted to kind of say, David, to your question that you asked in chat. I think with the implementation of C K I R in the work that we're doing with um that we're also shifting culture with teachers and we're kind of being guided by another entity to be able to place blame a little bit on that culture shift. Um and getting into classrooms more or doing more walkthroughs in classrooms and getting teachers into each other's classrooms. And so I think that shift alone is going to help and want, you know, make people want to improve instruction because it's working um with E L A. Um and I think that, you know, in order for us to see what, you know, the 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 smartest person's in the room, right? And so looking at each other's classrooms and watching the instruction, they wanna be better. We wanna do more. And I think that we are in a place where we can kind of capitalize on the growth that we have and move forward. I'm excited. Um and so I wish I could talk to you a lot about reading and it's all very, very important to me. And I'm not gonna talk about it much except for to share because we do have this end of year data. And I think that, you know, we becoming more data driven in our work too with the C L A focus will help with math implementation. Um but we got, we listed our end of year data um on Friday. And, you know, we wanna, we wanna have eighty percent of our kids doing what they're supposed to be doing and learning that. And you know, we're hardly ever there, or even like on level of practice. Um or at least in my history here in Spain, which is nearly twenty years. Um our kindergartners came in this year at Eastside, um eighty percent below benchmark. They would, they didn't, they didn't know what they were supposed to know when they entered. And now kindergarten is an easy year to make rough, right? Because getting them brushed, they don't know anything. So that's beaten. And so um we're, we're gonna see a lot of growth in kindergarten. But this year we saw the most growth that I have ever seen. And um so they started eighty percent below benchmark. And we ended the year with seventy four percent or above. So and that's due a lot in part to our adoption. Well done, Jack. Um very much in part to um Chad's work and Amelia Ed's work with um O R T I I. Um and the commitment that that district's level team has made. Um and I'm just really hopeful that we're gonna continue to see gains like this. And our first and second grades don't look too bad in there, so. Also, I'm seven years into this admin gig and it dawned on me a couple of weeks ago that I can delegate this presentation. That's exactly what I did and I'm a genius. Also, I remember I had to do it twice last year. I think Kara's invited me back for a summer presentation real quick. And so I feel like I was not, I'm not doing. And um I do really also want to highlight um something else that's going on really great in our school. And that's our social emotional learning intervention program and that's classroom run by Rachel Lindsay. She's, I delegated to her. Um but she has a great presentation for you guys to make. Um Rachel also, so she um started um with us Blossom Gold about seven years ago, right? Um as an educational assistant who ran our check in checkout, I hope that sounds familiar to you, but that, you know, we're trying to get try to get that up and running, um which we did because Rachel Lindsay kind of took it over. And then she um went back to school, um about three, um we hired her on as our now S E L teacher. Um and she and myself and our school have a great collaborator in Heidi Luckman um here at the district office. And so she has really um developed an intervention program that is, you know, meant to be proactive for our students um to meet their special emotional needs, um which is they're needier than us. They have so many needs and we're trying to to meet a lot. And what we've learned in this process as well, we have a really strong tier two intervention in her program. Um we forgot to implement it tier one, which is heavily an integral part of building a system. And so I'm happy to say and announce too that Rachel Lindsay has been hired as our dean of students at Eastside for next year. And she is going to make sure that tier one is clearly in place like it is now for initial English arts. Um and um so that we can continue to build tier two really strong and um an additional tier three support. So um take it away, Rachel.
Okay, thanks for having me. But before I start, I just wanna recognize the parents in the room, graduates, because I'm a parent of a graduate this year. And as an advocate for students. And as and stepping into um the TOSA dean of students, I really wanna focus part of that on building that home school partnership. And so thank you. Because thank you for doing your job. And thank you for getting those kids to school. Thank you for advocating for them. And also partnering with their teachers for twelve years. And so just kudos to you guys. Congratulations. Yeah. Okay, so um next slide. So here we go. I am going to be talking about um our systems of support for behavior at Eastside Elementary. And we follow a N T S S tier system of support. And we worked hard on establishing a tier system and using evidence-based research to inform and guide our decisions for our systems of support. So basically, when I talk about tier one, I'm looking at a universal support for all students. Kara just spoke too that we wanna strengthen um tier two, which is targeting support for students who appear at risk. Like they're just not where developmentally they should be, age appropriate for emotional regulation and social skills. And then tier three is a more individualized support for a few students who need more intensive and um who have persistent challenges, but you just kind of see one-on-one interventions. And what are the next five? Um what I feel we want for our students Um, what I feel we want for our students is and across the board for all of our students is instruction on lagging skills. We want them to be supervised, fed, learning when they come to our building. We want to re- um to remain on track academically. We want specific interventions to support them in the classroom. And we want support from trusted adults. And I feel at Eastside we are doing all that really, really well. Um, academic and behavior connection because something that I've been learning through um. Uh, my trainings that have been provided for the school district, and I appreciate that so much. Thank you for professional development. Um, for them at any time to do that, is that academic and behavior are connected. And so when a child's low grade level and reading or math. We meet them at their level. We teach them practice strategies. We make accommodations and modifications. We look for growth over time, not instant proficiency, and we don't take it personally. Well, that's the same with behavior. All of it's the same. So um. Something that I learned recently at one of my trainings is the higher the number of suspensions during the course of the semester. The lower the non suspended student scores are on the end of semester reading and math evaluation. Suspensions not only affect the student that is going home. But it affects the students that are staying and remaining in the classroom. So. As an advocate, advocate highly as um for restorative practice. Practices versus punitive. And to me, suspension is punitive. Um, so approaching behavior needs to be the same as we approach academics. We don't send kids home when they can't read and they can't do math. Right? So let's look at our tier one. In tier one, system of support that we have here um at Eastside Elementary. Um, teachers are writing daily S E L into their schedule, just like they write math time, reading time, writing time. Um, the S E L team um helps with first, the first three to four weeks of school, looking at data. We take data, a lot of data with social emotional learning is subjective. Um, we understand that. So the more input in, the better. Um, we use brain breaks, um which are proven to help our students with their freeze. Fight, fight responses. Um, and I think that's important for us to all be educated and continually to be educated on our current neuroscience. That tells us about how our brain works. And and that helps our staff when we provide accommodations. That actually one might see right in a home like in I U P or Bible or we do those accommodations for all of our students. Um. We have started with um positive office referrals and that help incorporate. And past practices and P B I S to recognize our students for their strengths. And something that I think is really awesome about doing positive office referrals is we really aim to give every student one. It's not just specific student. Um, because every child will have a moment that they do something well. And it's really important to focus our attention on that. But it also is helpful for our administrators to be able to call home. Especially to some of those struggling students, parents, to get to hear something positive. And that phone call on the other end, that helps that home school partnership that I was talking about. Um, really manifests. And I know that Kara mentioned to hear a parent crying, oh my gosh, thank you for calling and they need something positive. Versus, oh, we need you to come get your kid or this is going on. It really makes a difference. So um that's something that we are doing well at Eastside. Um, we have our peaceful playground, um which creates a set of expectations and language to be shared across. Um, with um all recesses. It was something that we did really well at that we implemented and started at Blossom. The pandemic kind of put a hold on that and it's something that we're diving back into um next school year as well. And just basically with um peaceful playgrounds, it just helps students with um. Creating those problem solving skills for resolution. And once again, where there is um behavioral concerns. We have, there's zones that are marked in. So instead of a child missing recess, which we know they need, they need to be moving their bodies. Um, that's not going to help them sit for another three hours and foster them if they don't get that. They can be assigned to a zone. They can be assigned to suites. They um and be away from the conflict of the peer that they haven't been able to really work out yet or build those skills on. Um. And once again, in tier one, we do check ins. I have kiddos, I'll speak more to the first tier two, but. I have kids come in and check in, check in with me every morning that are not like my students that work within my tier two program. They love to come in and talk. Um, they love to share when their dog died, when they had a family member just passed away. And these are students that don't have behavior. They're really good at masking. They're internalizing the having struggles. But they come in and they get to share and they get to get that out. And then I, they'll write a little note and they'll take that to their teacher. And then their teacher gets to see where they're starting. And it makes such a difference just knowing that they are starting their day with someone who understands they're validated and they feel supported. Um, and um then we've started our character strong. And this year we, at the very end of the year, we did a universal screener that they have provided and we did that up staff. And we use that to help put in our data, our academic data um in regards to placement and what works best for students. And and how to make that all equitable across um the classroom for all teachers. And so that's been really exciting to see as well. And right now, I've been, our dealer jitters going on, so just like in a classroom, I'm going to show you something that we do called a brain break interval. And so in order to learn, connect, memorize, and retrieve information, we got to be awake and we got to be focused. And so this is a quick interval to reengage the prefrontal cortex that we have. And you're just going to alternate. I want to see you all do it. If you're feeling uncomfortable, welcome to the students line. And you're going to alternate between the okay sign and the peace sign. So you'll go, okay, peace, okay, peace. Okay, peace, okay, peace. Try to do it. Both hands. You're alternating. All right. Got it?
Uh huh. Uh huh. Yeah.
He's working.
Oh, um. Weird. Wait. Wait.
So we can go to here's some pictures of our students doing character strong. Um, there's our positive office referral board that we have on the hallway. You can see how teachers display or the curriculum that they're using. Um, this is the kindergarten class and Mrs. Sablin's class. Um, at Eastside, working together, building those social emotional skills. Um, and it's just really fun to watch and see them enjoying themselves. All right. So before we get into tier two and tier three support, I think it's really important to understand the why. Um, and so, and the what, and not just the why, but the what and the behind it. So I have a little um. I I admit it doing with this spending over the land, it did a little video for you guys to watch.
Hey, welcome back. Today, I really wanted to think about.
Let's hope.
All right, bye, guys.
About what's the best way to teach teachers about trauma without getting them distracted with all the technical stuff? And what's the most important?
Okay, why is this guy going to say something about it? So um what's there to in tier three or four? So we're supporting um children to be able to learn independently and how to manage their behavior. Um, it's a very self-contained leveled program. Um, the length of time that students get for this intervention is uh driven by the student need. Um, and we have learned that discipline, not punishing. Helps keep students accountable. And so empathy is there, but accountability is also part of that piece.
Understand and learn. And I thought that the best.
I hope you can hear it.
Way to do it might be to just make a difference between.
What's the name of it? Learning brain versus.
A learning brain versus a brain in survival mode. So we'll just call it learning brain versus survival brain. And this is the difference. So learning brain.
I'll.
Can I try to refresh the page real quick?
Is this brain that's open to learning new information? And it's completely okay with ambiguity and grays.
Adrian could go to example.
Hey, welcome back. Today, I really wanted to think about.
Speaks to the need for bringing broad data and getting.
Can we give the email the link?
Yeah.
And we can put in learning brain versus learning brain. It is a topic. The overall, I don't want to speak to them. It's it's really good. And and. In the end, it just speaks to the fact that we are all responsible for these students. And the more that we're all surrounding the students um and taking that responsibility, the more safe that student is going to feel. Versus um. When we say that student's not my student, that's not my problem and we walk off by and that student is alone and doesn't feel safe. And and then struggle more. So it speaks to the language of um all of us taking um ownership and all of us being a part of. All of these tiers of support. It's not just the S E L team's job. It's not just the administrator's job. Um, it's not just the teacher and the classroom's job. It's all of our responsibility. So um, let's go on. We can apply.
What I can do is when you're done, I can, while I do it, I'll pull it up on YouTube. And I'll try to play it at the end.
I want you. And thank you so much. I appreciate that. So in our tier two, the daily check-ins that I was talking about, it just really um our students that who have been identified, who have been referred to our N T S S system and asking for support. They allow them to express and identify their emotions because um. If you don't know what you're feeling, you can't begin to understand it in somebody else. So, you know, we constantly hear, we want them to have a friendship skill, we want them to have empathy uh for others. Well, you can't do that when you just don't even know what you're going through yourself. So um the daily check-in helps kids work on that, expressing and identifying their emotions. Um, and it allows them to be validated um and supported in where they're at and how to start their day. Um.
Sure.
That's okay. That's okay. Um, coaching. So coaching is a proactive approach to supporting students. And helping students transfer the skills they're learning during their intervention time with us. Um, to other classroom spaces in the building. And so for uh coaching is a really, really important um key to the success of our tier two program. Um, and I will just make a plug. The more we can have um as coaches, the better. Yay. And um the tier two or tier three classroom because um. We plan our coaching time based on the data of when we start to see kids are flipping their lip and starting to lose it. And so we make sure the coaches are in their thrive or to those moments happening so they can be there to co-regulate, remind them what's the strategy that you've been working on? What can you do right now? And to help them push through that success, that moment successfully.
I have a question. So you said the kids come in and they tell you their feelings.
Yeah.
Do they know the language to use to express themselves? Or do you train them or not train them, but do you educate them on the different ways they can express themselves? And get that point across?
Absolutely. Yes. And that's part of it. So that's the practice piece. So um in tier one, they're hearing about emotions and feelings and talking there. And then tier two, they're coming in and they're, they're being, it's more intensified um instruction on that. And when kids come in who are not a part of the program and are still just saying, what's the green zone or what's the red zone or like? Um, then I explain to them. Emotions that are in those. So a lot of people think red zone and they think anger. And that's not just red zone. Red zone is related. So um. And that's just basically means when you're just completely out of control with your emotions. And and so we try to let them know that there's no wrong emotion. There's no bad feeling. There's no bad zone. We put some into these colored zones. Um, and then they learn to be able to accept that stuff, those emotions for themselves and not be afraid to say they're feeling that way. Because I have a lot of students start off and they just want to say, I'm in the green zone, I'm calm, I'm ready to learn, I'm good. And they're not, but they're afraid to say that. So we definitely must work with them on that. Um, so yeah, and then um. Uh, the students meet like twice to three times a week um in our S E L classroom. We set up a schedule and we try to work with the teacher's schedules. It, you know, we don't want to pull them out of. For learning time. However, we also recognize that sometimes if that's the proactive time, if that's the struggle time. Then having them come out fifteen minutes with me is way better than them leaving that classroom anyway and and disrupting forty five minutes to an hour of learning. So it's really shifting that mindset to understand that fifteen minutes for a few weeks could be better than um. Three to four months. For consistent daily eruption of learning happening um in our instructional time. So. Um, yeah, so we look for that and we work with that and students on that. And and students are given specific um expectations when they come into the tier two classroom. And I use the first thing they do is come in and do a hand sanitizer or wash their hands. And that's not just because of pandemic. That's not just because I am afraid of catching everything and anything that they are carrying and with them. And but it also just, it tells me where they're at. Like if they can do that simple instruction, I'm like, okay. I, they're somewhat still in their, in their learning brain upstairs. Um, if they are defiant, like I want to do that, I know that we're headed downstairs and and they're not ready to learn yet. So I need to start off with some regulation and co-regulation strategies. And so everything in the tier two classroom. Means something. I had a kid the other day say, why is your spine on your tent, Miss Lindsay? You're crooked. You need to straighten it. And I said, that's just how it is. What do you need to do to adjust how you read it? What do you need to do to adjust your view? Um, and so everything has serves a purpose and it's very intentional and and helping the kids. Um, with their skills and learning and transferring that back to their classroom so they can be successful learners. And so um we do progress monitoring for our tier two. I'm excited to strengthen that with our character strong program. Um, this next year, but I do go in um usually six to eight meets for a strong max for twelve weeks. And I put in and do some data to see where they're at. My team daily takes data. We have some teachers that love to provide um data as well. And we include that because once again, we're socially emotional and versus academic, it can be very subjective. There's not like set assessments that are. Like when you're doing academic learning. Um, so it's important that we have a wide view um for that to get as close as we can. Um, and then. Uh, the class pass is a time that I use three times throughout the day. I have an open time. Because you just never know when you might need something. And so those students can come in and they can do yoga. Um, they can have support with academic. They can just talk and share. Oh, I have a first grade class that loves to come in, talk and share. These girls need it. Boy, do they need it. But it's helpful and their teacher has shared the success of it because they get it off of me. And then they can go back up and start learning again versus interacting once again with a teacher from instructional time. And kids just need to be heard. I mean, done it all. So um. Then the last is our reset room. It's really fantastic. Um. The reset room um was. Uh. Change my page, I can get to it. Was um is a therapeutic space that was created by Kara Davidson, our nurse Emily Parkers and myself. And we use evidence based practices to create a room intended not only for our students, but we wanted a space for our staff. We wanted a place that um also our teachers could go and they can finish their stress cycle. Um, and so um it is intentional. It's based, um, some of it is based on information provided by the reset. Um, process, a book that Heidi Luckman did, a book study on. Um, and speaking of Heidi Luckman, she has been an amazing resource to myself. When researching and furthering my education on neuroscience and turning around my brain around that. Um, and trauma and force practices that our school needs when approaching behaviors. So thank you. I appreciate that. All right, I know you're feeling it. I see some of you are looking away. Adrian, I want the next show. I want you to put your hand up. And this is something that all of our students do. It's a little breathing exercise. And you're going to start with your thumb. And you're going to breathe in through your nose as you trace your thumb. You're going to breathe out as you go down. And then breathe in. And breathe out. And breathe in. And breathe out. Breathe in. And out. And in. And out. Here's some pictures of our tier two classroom being very successful. And that picture up in the top left that says bananas, that was a breathing exercise. We do a lot of different breathing exercises because we get creative. And to help the kids really understand breathing through their nose and not through their mouth, I use a straw. And they get to put some drops of paint on a paper. They get to blow it around. And then they create it into their breathing monsters. So, that's one exercise. And you can, we are checking in thermometer. Right there where they check in daily that I was talking about. And they have little pencils with their pictures on them. And once again, I have kids who aren't with me all the time and they say, "Can I have a pencil?" And I'm like, "Sure, thank you." "We'll get you a pencil." There's the tent that I was speaking to. But, yeah, it's been really successful and I'm really proud of the work that our students are doing. Because I'm just guiding them and they're doing the hard work. All right, so tier three, the last that we'll be speaking to. We just started implementing a tier three space for tier three interventions for more intensified instruction. And in that classroom, the use of dosing takes place, which means providing a level of stress at a time for a student to manage in order to build the skills. And that's in a space then that can be managed if it completely, they go flipped versus in that classroom, having to learn to be dosed with all those stresses where it can be disruptive to the learning environment. And we look at restorative justice as a form of discipline. Restorative consequences are those given to students to repair the harm they caused and should directly relate to that harm. So, for example, if a student throws food in the lunchroom, he or she should have a restorative consequence of cleaning that lunchroom up. And so, I'm really big on that. I, the kid pulls down the bulletin boards when they're going through their dysregulatory process. When they calm down, they reset, we go back and they restore the bulletin board. If they write on the walls, when they calm down, they reset and talk, they go and clean the walls. And they have to say, "It makes a difference and it makes the connection to what they did was wrong." More so than just sending them to Mrs. Davidson's office and missing, once again, PE time or a recess time. There's a connection between them. So, we try our best. There's not something for everything yet that I have found, but we really, really try our best. So, our main goal is inclusion for all our students. However, we feel this needs to be done well at Eastside. And done safely with proper support. So, we've tried to grow in our understanding of trauma and exceptionality, which is a term I like to use for different learning disabilities. I call them exceptionality when supporting these transitions. So, we provide a trusted adult and the use of dosing at specific times in the classroom to help that child build stamina in order for that student to build acceptable with their teacher, peers, and academic work. So, they will have a heavier schedule of being in the tier three, which I kind of want to change the name of that. Be Well keeps really ringing in my ears. But they, then also, it's not to just be in there all the time. They're not going to learn the skills socially that they need and emotionally if they're not with their peers. So, finding the times that we know and that stress ladder. Start down here and have the kids help us build their stress ladder. What's the easiest subject time? What feels the most comfortable? And then the hardest period. And then they get to watch themselves build that ladder and build that success and feel good with their peers and their teachers in the classroom. And here's some pictures of, one, two, three, success going on. It looks like a classroom. It feels like a classroom. And just a little bit more accommodation and understanding of a little bit more of social emotional learning because you can't learn if you're not regulated. So, here's any questions or thoughts that you might have. But I wanted to leave you with this quote from the Lapidic Problem Solving Co-founder. Dr. Stuart Avalon says, "Skill not will. When someone is behaving in a challenging way, it's not because they aren't trying hard enough to behave better. It's because they're struggling with the skills to do so. Skills like flexibility, frustration tolerance, and problem solving. Skills that underlie virtually every type of mental health issue. People do well if they can." Thank you.
Kids are, do you deal with in tier two and tier three?
So, tier two to three, and the students that I help support and have the privilege of helping support are around 25, I would say. I just put together 25 packets from their work that they've done with me all year. I collect that and then I give it to them at the end with a little regulation tool. They get bubble ones because they learn some breathing and then they get a little step. So, about 25 checking in. A lot, like, I probably-
Anatomy and physiology for the first time, I can guarantee, it's not like-
Ran out of space and kids want more. And then daily, we have kids come in and out and different kids-
Question, would you build a website for major-
Tier two space, depending on what's available and how it fits. Once again, their need and what the need in the moment is. A lot of times, you know, our teachers do really well with second chances, third chances, fourth chances. Their empathy is incredible. And I can't thank them enough.
Hey, welcome back.
Passion fatigue is something real. I have it. We all have it.
Today, I really wanted to think about, what's the best way-
It's heavy. And so, I am thankful that they pushed through that and we have chance after chance after chance. But we also try to do our best when we, I'd say, the SEL team are finishing team to-
To teach teachers about trauma without giving them distracted with all the technical-
They need as well. And so, having these other spaces that kids can come to and finish their day out and finish-
And what's the most important thing for-
Fully and get on that bus and go home versus calling, once again, a parent and having to say, "You need to come get them." It makes such a difference in that student's day, the teacher's day, our day, and parents as well. So, yeah. This is beautiful. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you guys for your support. I, I love what I do.
And I'm assuming that these types of practices can be applied at all different gradations, et cetera.
Absolutely.
Hey, welcome back.
I feel-
Today, I really wanted to think about-
There are advocates in these buildings right now that don't even know they're made for this job. I feel that this position should not be just at a K through sixth level. I feel there should be an SEL teacher. There should be a tier nine and there should be SEL teachers at that high school. I feel that it has come to us at any time from any other district and they may not have received SEL in their school. And so, we need to provide that instruction.
Hey, welcome back.
There is no way around it.
Today, I really wanted to think about, what's the best way to teach teachers-
This is something that we all have to step up to the plate and do. And so, if I can advocate for that as well, I am-
About trauma, without getting them distracted with all the techni-
For all buildings. I'm also going to be a voice for our teachers.
And what's the most important thing for them to under-
It is, it is extremely difficult to be torn between choosing the one and choosing the twenty. And you get in that space and you get in that wedge. And it's really, really hard. And it's a lot. It is secondhand trauma for our students when they experience a room clear. It is secondhand trauma for our administrators when they're called an MS, a B, and kicked and hit and spit in their face. So, we'll show up and, and we keep doing it. Our kids show up and they keep doing it. So, providing all of our students specifically with that tier one to know how to regulate through that, to know how to finish that stress cycle is so, so important. So, we don't become numb to it. It's a very scary place to be. You can't go out into society and walk into a restaurant and some dumb man comes in and is screaming and hollering and we don't apologize about it. We need to be aware. This is so, we need to be there and be engaged. And so, the work is really important. I'm very thankful for our teachers and what they are doing. I think what we are doing at Eastside can be done anywhere and everywhere.
Hey, welcome back. Today, I really wanted to think about, what's the best way to teach teachers about-
I had a teacher congratulate me on my position the other day and talked about consequences and talked about state. And I said, "When ODE came, they specifically asked me like if I had any concerns." And I said, "Well, you have two laws right now that cross each other out." You have a law that says that kids don't have to start kindergarten or spex. But you have another law that says at five years old, they can't be a part of our kindergarten program anymore. So, parents, you either have a place to put them, you either have the money to do it or the parents are forced to put them into kindergarten. And we all recognize they're not ready to start. So, I asked the state, "What are you going to do about that? These laws don't work. They're not supporting each other and they're not supporting us." That's why I want to follow up to those conversations. I really wanted a voice for our staff at a higher level because our administrators are doing-
About trauma, without getting them distracted with all the technical stuff.
We are, second direction is doing all we can.
And what's the most important thing for them to underst-
Excuse my language, damned if we do or damned if we don't. I've always looked at, you know, equity across our districts. We have an SEL teacher there, Ms. Iowa. And, oh, Madison. Sonya, sorry. Yeah, Sonya. Milk Home is Iowa. And St. that is Arton. So, yeah, there is this position. What we need to work on and what we can all do better is, once again, finding those, making the system, solidifying them, having outlines that we all are trained in that same structure. I think we're trying and we're doing the best we can. It just takes everyone to be on board. About professional development. I would love there to be time for that. Just, it's critical. I agree. Absolutely. You can't learn if you're not regulated. And, and once again, that teacher component, something that I didn't talk about is we have this like call system that I really want to work even heavier on for our staff at Eastside. But there's one in there called a flip-flop. And it's a great opportunity for a teacher who's saying, "Good," after a moment, to call flip-flop and then I can step in and start math and get it going. And that teacher can go to that reset room I was talking about and have 15 minutes to finish that stress cycle. So, they can come back in and be that most fantastic teacher. There's no need for them to have to push through and suck that emotion in and then go home and just release it. It's going to build up. It's the pot is going to boil over. We don't allow the release. So, we're teaching our kids that, so why aren't we doing it for ourselves?
Um, Kim, and we're making some strides certainly in professional development. Heidi, this summer, it's going to be working with a whole bunch of our professors. And kind of creating, well, what like reviews or intros to Flavortic Problems. New rule training, the whole thing. None by the first intervention.
Oh, yeah.
Flavortic Problem Learning, Brain Science.
FPLC?
Yep, the whole thing, the full science. And so, chatting with them really pretty focused to our support staff that spend a lot of time with these kids too and making sure that they're kind of on the same path of learning. And so, that we are speaking the same language because there can be a disconnection in that from who's been trained when and what the turnover rate is. And so, really kind of carrying over that learning and seeing that what you're going to work in this space. So, you're also going to do this.
We're making a big push that here in July, coming up here just shortly, and then again in August, all of our classified staff getting informed is that the SEL program-
And, you know, Karen, it's really important about it is the fact that parents feel upset because this kid is being acting out. Well, when they were in school, those kids were not in class. And they don't, they don't understand that. You do not understand that the system under which we have the department has changed. And putting kids in a classroom all day so that the rest of us never see them is not something that we do anymore. And that's really hard for some of the parents to understand when this disruption is happening and it's depriving their kid of the education. Shag it because of this stuff. And figuring out how to get to the point where people understand what they're trying to do and how we get there is a difficult one. And it's hard for teachers that have been doing it for a long time. You know, they, when I was a kid, I was a disruptive child. But I wasn't as disruptive as the kids I see today. And I had teachers that recognized that I couldn't sit in a classroom. So, I was the eraser cleaner. There were places outside that they'd get, get, get another eraser and you'd go out back against the wall for 20 minutes. The lines were lined it. Come back. Sit back down, we do this fine. Or box of pencils. Test is going to go on, "All right, pick up the pencils and give everybody a pencil."
Yeah.
So, I would, get pencils up. But I got up, I got to not sit. I mean, I, it was bad. I mean, I could not sit that long. So, and then teachers had the tools in which, now at least with my faith, they did it. And I learned all these skills out of them, like my teachers because of the way they taught, how they made it to me. So, I can get you really angry with me. And then getting out of the classroom, I'd say, "Oh, thank you."
That did happen. If someone learned how to escape their feelings, then I would not-
It's quite significant, can't yourself?
Yeah.
If you stole me, was I going to stand back down? No.
Yes, and good coping skills. Best. That would not stand a-
They did not, not be one of them. I don't think people really understood that as well. They may have had the intuition that, that do certain things that don't mediate. But they didn't have a bunch of these other kids who were now in regular classrooms who were not there and interested in it. So, I think we've got a, it's an education kind of value that everybody's- And in a final mouth, we want every one of them to be better than they did at school. And that's, I think, is that completely impressive.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I appreciate the opportunity to give a call.
Rachel, I did try to play it again while you were speaking and it's not going to go, but I did send it to all of us.
Thank you. It's worth watching. I can one comment, but sure. One thing I didn't like was what you called dosing. Yeah, sure. We thought, I thought we were talking about dosing his, but finished. Oh. True. From Bruce Carey, who's a neuroscientist. And so, we, the thing I'm saying, those, those credits. Yeah. You can handle it. I really support you on this. Thank you. Thank you. For a couple of years now, we've been discussing emotional learning. And we're trying to make assumptions of what that looks like. And I mean, this is the first time that it has been broken down like this to where I can really envision what's happening at your school and what the support that these kiddos are receiving. Because we do hear that term a lot, social motherhood and social motherhood. And so, this may really give the clapback of what's happening at the school. So, thank you. And I really appreciate it. It's very impressive and I'm really proud of you here. Thank you. That means a lot.
And I did want to thank the literacy chosen. Eastside success with literacy, not being like, so, do it. Because if you can't be regulated, you can't learn. And so, we're getting emotional. They're opening the gate. But, but the success of literacy education or math education is, I'll stay on there. So, thank you. I'm probably going behind it.
Yeah, it's a good experiment to follow that. And I don't know. I think my thinking is that for members of our group. Practice is great. Very good work. We are down thirty-four students from June of last year. Practice is great. Very good work. We are down thirty four more students than June of last year. And we'll know that kind of them are already in the range which close without our impact. But we are down twenty four from last year. We're also down twenty four from last month. Sorry, Eli, they're almost all of them. Sorry, seventeen. Um, other than that, we have several students who went backwards to elementary schools. You don't have anything that can change it. And that's for the high school. It's down about thirty five since April. So what are we going to do? You know, I'm particularly into those numbers and that one. Because ideally, if they're leaving the high school, it's much graduation, maybe they're going to destination. I don't know. But they're not destination.
Me, you, we had a few go away. Um, we've had a few go where it's. Uh, so yeah, it's just, you know, we had, we've had a part of a ten day drops.
Yeah.
So kids, it's kind of, yeah, most, most work is just same day jobs. They're here. They're, they're still here. They didn't go anywhere. So.
Yeah.
Um, they, they show back up usually in a couple of weeks. They'll be here for summer school. They'll be here in the fall. Uh, so yeah, our, our attendance, I mean, it's literally almost every day that we get half and double.
Is that different than last May? Um, what's going on at high school?
No, that's, that's.
No, that's about right. There's a difference between April and June of last year and present day, roughly. It's not as a huge percentage. It basically just is our percentage. But um we're also going to be keeping a better track on um I V Ps next year. And so hopefully they can keep a little better eye and maybe also might have a share, be able to track that.
This is kind of the, the, I used to get a lot of track downs.
That is where you'll see a most situation. Um, we are on track to get accurate budget numbers for next year. We are not projected to fill the allocation in any of our funds. Except for capital projects funds, we are over by about eight hundred thousand in allocation. So tonight later, you'll see it in preparation transfer to a better authority from contingency to um facilities acquisition, essentially the bond project. We had more in this year than I think they watched it for. They didn't have much. Finally, the notes. Um, other than that, we're projecting to be on track for any fund balances. We're just gonna get um bigger, bigger budget and hopefully can succeed again. Does anyone have any questions on financials or?
Correct. This policy G C D A criminal records checks and fingerprinting. Uh, this is a whole one. We've had a policy. This is O S B A's uh review of that policy essentially. Uh, and it's required uh from point R five eight one dash O two one dash zero five one zero dash zero two one dash zero five two. And then a couple of ours. Not a lot changed. There were, um, I tried to get away from red highlighting as I saw this impossible green. So anything in yellow is what the committee chose to keep. Uh, the gray is what will be removed uh in our final policy. Uh, we did choose to add some requirements for T S P C licensed certified registered individuals just to make it more clear. Uh, there were some sections around uh whether or not somebody would be approved on a proposed shared basis if they something turn up on their criminal record check. Uh, and we chose not to uh offer a probationary period. If you fail the criminal record check, then you don't have a job. It's basically what they uh remove it. Um, once the next one gave back special education I M Ps, uh, this one just added two orses. Uh, so real simple one. And then we have that associated A R with that. Uh, which adds some language under the district services. Uh, this is a required A R. Uh, uh, then there's the section added on page sixty four. Um, which talks about all district employees assigned to work with the student with specialized needs to assist the student. Basically, they will all have access to the I V P. Uh, and then there's the section on, starting on page sixty nine, continuing on page seventy about the. Which is new uh I believe this year. Next one is special education procedural safeguards, A B A. Um, there's a section added about access to records. And then added ors. Um, use of restraint or seclusion. This is also a required policy. And they made a few changes. Uh, well, actually, I'd like to point out on seventy six, uh, there's one, just one section in red. That was uh something that we added as our uh behavioral specialist, I think. Uh, noted that it wasn't very clear in this policy. Uh, so we wanted to make sure it was very clear that seclusion should not be considered in early childhood settings. Um, so we made that explicit in this policy. Uh, talks about our record retention on seven seven. Uh, and then it adds some teeth to the policy on seventy nine. Uh, that as a staff member who violates this policy and works administrative regulation may be subject to discipline up to and including the distance. Um, then we have J A B A R. This is a required A R. Uh, and it establishes procedures to follow after an incident involving use of restraint or seclusion. Um, and it helps support the procedures. Adds a little description on the first page there. Um, a few footnotes also to add clarity on eighty three. That's pretty much it. Does anyone have any question? I will also point out that policy committee meetings are a public meeting. Anybody wants to, anyone else? Here, I discuss these. Yes.
Yeah. During a classroom. Yeah, you have that.
There's a couple of rooms at Blossom Village I saw. What they were used for, they're kind of sketchy.
And first, it's breaking it a little too. It's, it's keeping them a little bit more by force as opposed to saying, you want to go over here and sit down and have quiet time in this room. It would be like, you know, you're going to a room.
There's a lot of things you have to do. There it's called a sublimation.
Yeah.
They're a little too tight.
Anything else? Okay, any other questions? Alright, four number highlights. Congratulations, well. I just was fired closer with all sun. I was a lot of. Give me tell, say you're awesome, y'all. Um, and I went to Milco Mans. It was the very first um course, the last one, you know, to express. In their um assembly. It was awesome. The people was incredible. And um just holding a big heart in the pool. And like, I love seeing like this feeling for excitement for each other. When they have friends sit up or like the kid who's been at eighty balls or whatever. It was amazing. Like, it was so cool. I loved the children. I thought I got over there. I thought it was, it was just really great. And I wish I'd gone more. It's very exciting. You know, very cool. I'm looking at a little bit of stuff. I'm celebrating, you know, so it was awesome.
The choir concert was great. I really appreciated it as well. Um, they, I didn't give you the order, the awards and send them to the track house, but I did go to the school. But I think that's like an involvement. It was fun to see every one of the sixty three kids that applied for the scholarship. And I appreciate the fact that a number of our people in our community have given money enough for the vocational ones. Thirty seven thousand scholarship to go to a bowling school is a pretty neat thing. Uh, I hope kids really understood what was going on there, what they can do. We, we never get enough vocational picks to deal. I mean, we get a few, but we, we have a lot of money. Giving a lot. It's kind of hurting to see that. Again, a shout out to the local community people who go through all those scholarships. Sixty three acquisitions is a lot of reading to do. And they fill out a lot of stuff. They get their scholarships and they should know, a lot of people like ten, twelve, or thirteen, or fourteen, read through every one of those and make a decision about which scholarship they should get. All those kinds of things happen. Um, it's really pretty impressive what goes on behind the scenes. Uh, I, I shout out to the people who really worked the hardest, which is catch our close, the last thing will be the lovely. Uh, and it will eventually be like our staff. So we're just taking care of the money. Uh, she knows that. So we keep talking. But it, it is neat to see that growing. I think we started in the nineties. Uh, and now there's about seven and a half million dollars in debt. And that's it. There are many foundations, which we get about four percent a year to give out. And that's getting to be a lot of them.
Yeah.
And it's, um, it's time to see the kids' reaction. But clearly, we got thirty seven thousand and actually remember any of the. Did not remember walking across the city. He's like, the next day was. How was that? They called my name. I saw my picture from the spring. I walked across and I don't remember anything. It was kind of, it, it is a shock when you hear that and understand. And the one kid received probably the most impressive scholarship they could ever get is one from Roseburg Lumber. Uh, I can't remember the name. Park Valley Foundation. But I mean, it's like eight or ninety dollars. All, all.
Where he's going to live.
Well, they, let's see, they provide summer school bands for all these kids. They come back to the car. And they get its other training to make sure they're good. But it's not a major program. It's more like a scholarship. Yeah, it's a lot of.
I love thinking all these three master's are.
But I think that's been impressive. I think that again, a lot of community members invest a lot of time to make this stuff happen. And a lot of them, that's a lot of their family income. When they get done. It's, it's really kind of amazing. And when you hear some of the stories, the one that's another big one. Uh, I, I heard the story just last week. Um, her husband owned a electric company here in town. He had a lot of money and she would call, she lived down by the swimming pool. And she would invite the swimming pool every year for lunch and say, what do you need for this thing? And then she'd say, I need to film the little foot slow, whatever. So she brought a check. And she said, you know, you keep saying that this pool needs to be changed. We need to fix it up. She said, can you get me a little tape to fix? And I said, sure. So they followed. I got an architect from Eugene. So the next, the next time I went in, she said, so what did they have to say? And I said, well, they said we cost four hundred and seventy, eighty thousand dollars to fix the pool and do all some. So she took out her checkbook and she wrote a check. Seventy thousand. No, no one had any idea that the business was lost that, at that time. And now she gets a scholarship away that she's passed now. A scholarship away that's like sixteen thousand a year, forty years. I mean, it's.
Fifty.
Yeah, it's kind of remarkable. But those people have been in experience for a long time.
Yeah.
And they want to do things for our kids. So hopefully that helps those younger kids see that. The assembly was us. The kids was well behaved at any assembly I've been. So I was very impressed. All of a sudden, you've done that too. That was really nice.
And he threatened them.
And they were very respectful of the kids getting in. That's what they were. They got their own individual tiered stuff. Crazy busy with the graduations. Destinations resource during graduation. It's always funny during too. I don't know why they put the, could this place go more in the front row to block? At the beer band concert, it was uh interesting with my fans. And there's, and I actually really liked seeing that group. The, the concert band, the Jeff. Also managed to make the you know, everybody's appeared in a rental awards ceremony. That's really did a great job representing all the students. You put in a lot of work. Uh, you know, if you've never been to a traffic, there's stuff going on. It's chaos.
Yes. I love the definitions for devotion.
Yeah, that was nice.
Yeah, it just.
Students were really nervous for that one. They really did that.
Yeah.
And they have higher credit.
Yeah.
And their faces line up and you know, even when they come up to you and they don't know you and you put your hand out and you say congratulations.
I love when they try to raise their hand.
Yeah.
No, it's free. And then I got besides the graduations, I gotta go visit Madison School. And they had a head starter class, visit the kindergarten class. And that is hilarious. And they are so fun. They go in there and they, you know, got the kindergarten chairs all on the carpet. Then the head yard kiddo behind them. And they're introducing themselves to each other, showing them the classroom. And they're just like little grownups. Like, my name's Maddie. Ten. And my name's Joey. Like shaking hands and sometimes they just come over and hug each other. Let me just see my back. Hug in and then like go over to their desks and show them everything that they made. And it was so nice to see. And I really liked that soft transition into kindergarten. So that they could see that. It was sounding, I think they only got a visit, or they only get to visit Madison. We have other groups, other kindergarten. So that was a lot of fun watching those kids.
To the little pirate kids.
No, it's head tech.
Okay.
I agree. We should. I agree, we should put. We were like, we can't take anymore. Anything else? Okay, now we're on to our action. We have resolution numbers twenty-four. Work operating a great part of appropriations that we already have talked about.
I did all uh in voting through the resolution number two four dash oh four. Riding in transfer uh provisions.
Thank you.
Do you have any to leave as well?
No.
They have my baby.
Thank you, Arnie. All right, any discussion? Let's go for vote, David.
Hi.
Diane, I'm Patty.
I'm.
Adrian.
Hi.
Arnie.
Hi.
Evan.
I will play small motion carrying.
Next up, approve our board calendar for twenty-four, twenty-five. And we've seen we got a couple of little changes.
There are. Uh, there are a couple of changes to the regular board meetings from the second Monday of the month. Uh, the first of those is October seventh. That's on me. But I really bought tickets for my siblings and my dad and I fell off the sea iron maiden, so I would. I brought it. I mean, I've watched the votes. So um I won't be here for four meetings or virtually. Um, I could drive her. I think so. We'll see. We got Tom Petty on his last year and I'm not wishing any. Uh, for four days instead, so we moved that one to the first Monday. Uh, October else just moved to the first Monday. Uh. And then for our special school board meetings that are typically technically set.
Stadium.
Yes. These are the dates that they. Uh, and then Memorial Day was the third Monday in May. So, or sorry, it was the fourth Monday in May, which our special board meetings usually are. So I moved it to the third Monday, which is the nineteenth Monday. Um, and then I just picked a date. Then it's close to where we did our board board work session. And I said it as tentative, so if things come up and people have vacation, we can always adjust that. Uh, but just to get a calendar approved and up on the website. Would be a good start to next year.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, how would I do the uh the forty uh twenty-four, twenty-five uh school board session for next period?
Thank you, David. Any other discussion? Have fun with Iron Maiden. What that not really going to Iron Maiden? Okay, uh, David.
Hi.
Diane. Oh, I. Both are slow. Moving on. Our point is board chair and our vice chair for next year. So let us go with uh our vice chair first. If you guys say.
Vice. Um, again, the the vice chairman Kevin.
You accept that? Okay. Is anyone else gonna run against Kevin? Get to do a speech then.
Just in the public.
That is so fun.
Main thing was not.
I'm so happy you only made it to our stage. I was just. Can't out of here.
And of course, you can write it down.
You watch. Okay, so we have a vice chair. And I don't think we we don't have to do an action.
So, can I remember vice chair?
Yeah.
All all favors.
Okay, now board chair. I would like to nominate Patty. As the next board chair. Anyone else? I think it's you. Anyone else?
They didn't do on you.
Now. I'm seeing my friend had to do this last year.
She was gone. It's not always. It's not always like.
I'm gonna need one of those rooms.
I just wanted to. You know, it helps being in leadership role, ability to understand, but it's also having the time and energy.
I'm big time. And that. And if I was just felt like I could give it my best, I would. I just don't really like that. No personal.
No.
There is. All right, we've got someone who's.
I was the back nation that they accept the nomination of Patty.
Yay. All right, all those favors. I. Congratulations, Patty, to Anna. All right, and then you would need to just need to assign our board committee. But please over there, I'm not on the official team maybe.
You can say that. I can handle heading for both of those.
Yeah. Adrian didn't want to do it again. He thought he was. Yeah, Adrian, you know, he's had a good time.
I I I wouldn't do one, I wouldn't do both.
That's fair.
And I was on both and I was the first number to nail it, so you could make all the meetings.
Always.
She negotiator. When I got nervous break.
Administrative committee. Let's go from like that administrative committee. Um, I would like to stay on that one. David and Diane are on that. The very first.
Negotiating.
Yes. I'll be on that. Wait, is it gonna be hard?
It's not, it's not. I mean, you know, I didn't want to disturb.
My my faith is that. As a reminder to all. Administrators are not a union and are not entitled to actually any negotiations to work agreement. So the workload of that is a much smaller commitment. Yeah. And I'll do that. Okay, so we've got Kim, we've got Diane, we've got Patty.
Okay.
Uh, facilities planning. I like facilities, but. I know Kevin likes facilities too.
Yeah, I'd love to stay on.
Okay, we've got Kevin. How many meetings is that?
Every month, no matter what.
It's the day, it's tomorrow at nine o'clock in the morning.
It's a lot.
You can't attend emotionally?
Yeah, yeah, you can.
And I'll be on that committee. Also, it's really great time to change. And we've got Kim, we need one more on that committee. Oh, Diane, I'm so sorry. Or do. Negotiation.
Uh, if anyone, if anyone do want on the.
Which one do you want to have?
Yeah.
We've got Adrian classified.
I'll bear that.
Arnie's gonna stick on classified. Those want classified. Addie, Addie jumped up and says we have to do that. So we'll. Addie, Arnie, and then we've got negotiations for license and we've got David. I'm gonna take uh Adrian off there. If it's slashers.
Maybe this is probably gonna be simple. I'm gonna test it at some point. It is.
We've got David by himself. Thank you, Kevin.
Well, I haven't done.
David, Kevin.
I already am classified, right?
It's true. We did, we all did it last year. So part of that, need one more. So, come on, somebody.
You can stand on that.
So you are very much. Um, yeah. I mean, yes.
Yeah, you do.
But you don't start something. I can't work in February. I'm always hoping to be closer to November and December. So we work. If possible, then really get it all in. Yeah, we started. We went all the way. Yeah. We tried that. Yeah, so, okay, so what we have so far is lightening. We've got David, Kevin. I mean, I can't, I just, I need to make this. I have a very horrible keto at home right now and. This is a very convincing here, but.
All.
Thank you, Arnie. Arnie, Kevin. We have this alternate um policy. I can do that one too. I like calls, but I wasn't able to ask. You know, I do too.
Crazy. They drive there.
Do it and. Kevin.
And Adrian's gonna be giving.
Yeah.
Okay. And then administrative superintendent or evaluation.
I think probably.
And then you, David, is that what you said?
I did add it.
Oh, well.
I mean, I. I don't mind being out there. Maybe.
So I have Addie, Kim and David, but. The only thing I'm missing in this top section is an alternate or classified negotiations. I had Diane on for license.
I'll be an alternate. How many, how many committees and what are?
Uh, two.
You can talk.
Three.
That's fair. I still, I wanna make sure. Nobody else. If you gave the virgin.
There was that following the legislative that you could get sent in the board and then. And then it presented and then it went away. I didn't know.
Yeah.
Next year, in the budget maybe.
I I.
We can't.
Speaking to people in the urban areas who. Well, that's. And comes right here. Area doesn't make any sense.
I mean, you know, it's if you want to really go around the page in the board, perhaps. Some people need some help with their life. They were now.
But there are people that could. So I get it. It's just with ethics and we can't vote on our own sake. Well, that was what came up to say we couldn't.
Well, we even people will vote on their salary.
Yeah.
People in Congress too.
Yeah.
I mean, even if we. Even if we voted it. It doesn't mean that we have to take it, but. If somebody should feel very comfortable if they ever came across a day, it was. Financially, they were not going to twist.
Right. That's why we should. Have an opportunity to say that. Needs is that. We're trying. You know, especially, you know, trying to represent our whole district, that needs families and. And our particular people that don't have great needs.
Thank you, David.
Would you like me to go on a fact finding mission and bring data? I'll find out and I'll bring that information to our August first session where we can.
Actually, that's a great idea. Okay, so our representatives, uh, right now we have our professional services evaluation, but Kevin's ahead of that. Uh, how much work was that one?
A lot. It was a lot of, there's a lot of work.
Was it a lot?
Yeah, yeah.
Research link and diners. Do you wait, who wants to be, who wants to go in the professional services? Do you want to do again? And then want to be on that? Be a member for that one?
There was none. You can sit off. Get some data and talk to the superintendent and. Then report to you that. You're excellent.
Yeah.
That's that's our perfect act and all. Yeah. It's an excellence. Yeah.
And everybody's been approved, but it's here, so we should put it our feet. I should do that.
Yeah, it's funny. I didn't have a single meeting.
So you wanna do it again?
I think a scholarship could be, I'm like, well, because Arnie would all be there. You guys always.
We can switch.
Switch shows Arnie is researching Diane and no, Arnie is. College. Yes. E S D budget. Adrian's already pointed by E S D, right?
Um, yeah, I think, are you doing that again as well, I mean?
Yeah.
They're both there. Adrian and Addie. Um, license evaluation committee.
It's it's part of the. Part of bargaining. Maybe set up to determine how all um. All of the first one is teachers, but why they're evaluated. And the process, the process.
Do you have anything? I'll be on that. Okay. Gonna do it. I don't need to.
Um, I do do it. No, we can't.
I remember that, I know that there was a time meeting and I just held my calendar. Remember, I think it's.
So it's adding for licensed evaluation?
No. Yeah, yeah, you are correct. And then administrative evaluation committee and student loan thing about both of those.
I don't remember, I didn't do it in student.
Committee, I'm not where it is. Yeah. I love what they do, but it's, I don't, we don't have a referral.
Well. I think it's, I think we need to change some, we love the issues a lot. Like we have since we kind of over the fat area, have really done a lot with the contracts. Uh, or the um. Lowering the. Uh, you know, I think right now we're trying to advertise it more. Students are taking advantage of it. There's six hundred thousand all. Um you know, I think right now we're trying to advertise it more, students are taking advantage of it, six hundred thousand dollars. Available to students at a thirty percent interest rate.
Wow.
Uh there was a time I just considered the teacher's alone committee.
It is, right now the only, only current uh flows that are currently up are for these history children.
Well, if you have children with the back track, it might be the Uragans too. Oh, huge.
Yeah. Exactly.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
And you can be at any level and.
Yeah.
And you can't be. First year.
You say you can't go, uh first year's five, you go to the first year's five, then you can take ten year sophomore. Uh fifteen year junior and twenty.
And is it required for border to be on?
Yeah.
Yeah, in their charter. The high school, the school and the school.
So. They give loans out to.
Any student.
Well, four percent is.
Yeah, that's to be out. Okay, so we, did you get that? We've got Adrian, who's on administrative evaluation committee, we've got Kevin, who's gonna be the student.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then schools, um. Wait, how did David make it without a committee? Wait. Oh. Yeah, okay, yeah, okay, Adrian's on to. I'll be, well, I mean, David did.
You get to the administrative evaluation and let Adrian not do it.
There's.
We have invited school. School.
I'm on that side. I like that since you're going really like.
That is awesome.
I. Yeah.
I love that.
Well, it's got a block from my. So basically.
I think that's obviously, I have a destination, oh, there are meetings too. So Diane. Okay, so we still have open a local, have any?
I have the junior high.
Junior high. The only one that sucks is Marshall.
You made a deep bit of likes, we gotta find everything. I'll send you this, I'll send you John.
No, it's awesome.
I just.
I wanna go through the tunnel still. Okay, so we've got. Who do we have left?
David and Adrian, and we have Millicom and.
Who's closer to what?
I didn't, uh, okay.
So you wanna switch those? Anyone who says that? You have all those, David?
Yep.
Fourteen. Very good last.
David, I know that this is our getting ready to open up that summer at O S B A workshop, so I thought we should probably kind of compensate. Are we planning on sending people to the lesson?
Yeah, I actually I sent a link out today uh. For you to let me know if you're going to go, if you're going to free conference, what your travel needs are and those types of things, so if you fill that out, I'll get everybody registered and. If you have any trouble, just let me know. Justin did say he is going. Um he would like to go and I think it'd be a good opportunity for you all and he to get some time to.
The sooner the better.
Yes, sure.
Yeah, are we trying to do the uh? November O S B A conference?
Yeah.
Probably so.
I'm gonna do both.
I will get it back.
And even if you don't plan to attend, please fill out the form, you only have one question, are you attending or not? If you answer not, that's the only question you have, but then that gives me a list in one spot, so when I'm maybe, you know, keep checking back the polls, are they going?
It used to be in that, now it's gonna save it. At the digital center then.
Which I did like that, cause I got sufficient issues.
It was better than.
Okay, so meeting adjourned, thank you everyone. Well, I don't. Oh, that's right. Yeah, it's good on. That's what we need. Oh.